Good evening and welcome to the Montomay Regional School District school committee meeting for Thursday, March 14. I would like to call the meeting to order at 6:02 PM. The next on the agenda is our adjournment to executive session. We will have a roll call vote to adjourn to executive session pursuant to the GLC 30A Section 21a3 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares it. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, Ms. Finnegan?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Gaines?
Aye.
Ms. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Aye.
And I am an aye. So we will adjourn to executive session coming out for regular open session approximately at 6:30 PM.[183.80][183.80](end of transcript)
Welcome back. We are back for our regular session, beginning at 6:31. The next on our agenda is the approval of minutes from February 29th, 2024, Montemoy Regional School Committee meeting. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Aye.
Moving right along to public comment. Anyone for public comment this evening? Seeing none, we will move right along to reports and discussion. The first up is a Montemoy Regional High School trip proposal for February 2025, an EF Tours to the Galapagos Islands with Mr. Dustin Burns.
Good evening, members of the school committee, Dr. Carpenter. Oh, there we go. There we go. So comfortable behind the computer. Let's see if this works. Oh, perfect. So again, good evening and thanks for the opportunity to present another trip that I chose because it's an excellent trip for supporting our science classes and covers a lot of different branches of science. We have our Costa Rica trip that's traveling in probably about a month from now, which is very exciting for us. And the goal was to have a trip that offers a little more variety and also gives an opportunity for students to take two trips if that works out for their schedule or choose one or the other as they go through their their high school years. So we tentatively chose February vacation 2025. That is the the target date for the trip. We have a couple of slides here and I can also share the itinerary and the proposal. Hopefully by now many of you are familiar with EF. That's the travel company. Most of our trips go through EF and we're all familiar with with the process and what to expect with that. Just to give you a little geography of where the Galapagos Islands are. They're about 600 miles west of Ecuador and this is a very special place, especially for biologists. This is where Charles Darwin spent about five weeks. Took about five years going around the world and spent about five weeks on these islands and studied a lot of the indigenous species there and it was critical in helping him develop his theory of evolution, which is still to this day the cornerstone cornerstone of modern biology. So it's a very, very special place for that reason. So I just wanted to give you the summation of the highlights of the justification of the trip and what we hope to achieve. And we can go specifically through the itinerary if you'd like to do that later and you should have a copy of that as well. So these islands in particular hit many branches of science, primarily biology with that theory of evolution, biodiversity, conservation biology, but also very unique characteristics that involve geology and ecology. So there there are a lot of things to learn when you go to the Galapagos Islands and a lot of things to directly observe, to provide experiential learning, which is what we're trying to achieve with these with these trips, not just sightseeing. Go. And this is what we what we just talked about. He studied primarily the classic species is the finch and seeing how the finches evolved on the different islands based on different unique ecosystems helped him to figure out the idea of adaptive radiation and how species change over time. Also, the giant land tortoises are are very iconic for these islands. Found only in near the Galapagos Islands and on the islands are marine iguanas that have evolved to dive and swim down to eat algae off of the rocks, so a very unique species, which really illustrates the principles of of evolution and so very another unique species for the for the islands. Also, a goal for us is to make sure that we absorb as much culture and language as possible while we're there while we're there. And if at all possible, depending on the size of the trip determines how many chaperones you can take and I'm always looking for a Spanish-speaking chaperone to help us learn Spanish whenever we go to Costa Rica or the Galapagos Islands, if that's a possibility. And another bonus of this trip is working with the Global Studies Program. I believe they had a trip planned to Tanzania and that didn't work out, but we thought, myself and Mrs. Police, that it would be a good idea and Mr. Dixon to incorporate the goals and the standards of the Global Studies Program. So that is the the plan, to take as many students from the Global Studies Program as possible so that they can achieve their goals, their requirements for that particular program. And this is what he he wrote for us to kind of summarize the justification from the Global Studies Program perspective. Give you a chance to read that if you'd like.
Mr. Burns, will he be going with you?
Yes, he will be traveling with us.
Excellent.
Yep. With as many of his students that are interested in going, that are that are able to go.
Great.
Yeah, so he's very excited about it as well. Don't have enough time for this, okay? So, there we go. We can certainly talk. Obviously, we'll we'll talk about the price. That's important and the insurance policy that's associated with that and the itinerary if you'd like. So I will pull that up. Okay, so hopefully we can see this and you'd have a copy of this as well, but... So we can stop at any point. This is the standard proposal from EF Tours, which is very consistent with what all the other trips have in terms of how they operate. Just for brevity, I will skip ahead to one of the most important parts and we can always backtrack if necessary. So here here's essentially the price and what we prefer based on past experiences is to include the full refund into the cost of the trip, which allows a family to get a refund within 24 hours of traveling. So it's a really important thing for us to have in case something happens. And this is what we have with the Costa Rica trip and it was a popular choice as well. If my eyesight holds up, it looks like the price is... Oh, great. Perfect. Right, with the discount and also we can talk about the fundraising efforts that we'll have. Forty-four, forty-nine for students and then if any additional adults would be traveling, which that's usually not the case, just the chaperones. So those are the highlights and I'll take any questions that you have about any part of the proposal or the itinerary.
Any questions? Ms. Gomes?
I don't have a question, just a comment.
Sure.
You know, I was looking at the two reviews that are in the packet, so I was very happy to hear you talk about this opportunity for the culture and the Spanish, because I was just looking at these two reviews, the previous travelers. And the food looked so delicious. Like, oh, so good. And I was looking at the hotels. One of the things, and maybe I haven't paid attention to previous ones as much, but I love that these appear to me, at least one or two of them, to be more local.
Yes.
Run hotels, which I think also add to the culture.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah.
I would expect, I I haven't traveled there yet, but when you're on these islands, those are their own little economies and I would imagine any business there is very local for that type of thing.
I love that. Oh, and I guess one other question and I apologize if this was in here anywhere. So they're flying in and then are they boating to the island? I was just, how is that gonna happen?
Yeah, sure. Let's take a look at the travel map.
Oh, yeah. Oh, they're flying. I think I'm I'm reading it here.
Yeah, from my understanding, when certainly travel, flying into a major airport in Ecuador and then flying to an airport central to the islands and then most likely, most likely, I would assume for traveling between islands, those would be boat rides.
Okay.
Because they're they're not too far apart from each other as you go from island to island. So those are most likely.
Because to me that adds a whole other experience.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Perfect. Thank you.
And you're just doing the nine days?
Yes.
Not the extended?
Not the extended. I suppose if that becomes a popular option and if the school committee would approve of extending it and it falls within our school schedule and it's acceptable to add those extra days, I would imagine that's a possibility.
It would be extra cost, though.
It would be extra cost, of course.
Okay.
We want to keep that cost as low as possible. Mr. Dixon has some really excellent ideas with fundraising. He's been very successful with that in the past, so we'll do everything we can to get the cost down for the students because we know that's important.
Anything else? All right. We do not have this as a vote. Is it okay to wait until our next meeting to vote on this?
Sure, absolutely.
Excellent. So we'll bring it back to our next meeting and vote on it.
All right, great. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Appreciate that.
All right, moving right along to fiscal year 25 budget final draft and approval vote, potentially.
Good evening, school committee. Mike Cohen-Camelin, school business manager. We have the vote of the budget. So this is the exact same number as was voted at the last meeting back in February, the last time we voted on the budget. It has not changed since then. At that point, I think I said there was a couple of things we were waiting for. It was another version of the budget from the the state budget. There has not been any update to the state budget since our last time we voted on the budget. And another thing was a really small change to foundational enrollment number that didn't actually affect the percentages because it was that small that's been updated. So budget is as it was. We've, since we last saw you, I think we've presented it at the Harwich Select Board and the Chatham Select Board and both FinComs as well. We finished with the Harwich FinCom last night and has all been relatively well received. We've not had any significant pushback on these numbers, so we are hopeful that if this is presented to the towns, they will be supportive. So the, actually, the Chatham FinCom voted on it today in affirmative. So... But they're not voting yet until they get this officially from you. You know, the select boards won't vote until they have it officially from us.
Questions? Comments? So in our packet, we do have a document with potential motions. Do I have a motion? Sure, that's great.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 25 budget of $46,511,471.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 25 assessments as follows. To the town of Harwich, $29,876,982 and to the town of Chatham, $10,308,940.
Good second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. All right. Moving right along to Strategic Plan and Student Opportunity Act final drafts. Dr. Carpenter? You want to do it from there?
Yeah, you can do it. Why don't you just do it from there?
You can just do it from there.
You're just so excited to show everyone you can move.
There we go. That'll save us half an hour. So, so tonight we have two things to present to you that are in your packet. So the first is the strategic plan, which a committee has been working on for, you know, throughout the fall and winter and also the the Student Opportunity Act plan. So, so four years ago, we brought to you the first iteration of a Student Opportunity Act plan and the school committee voted on that plan at the time. So the state has has made a shift in their practices where they want to see school districts looking at their data, looking at where we have gaps, how we can close them and to strategically plan for addressing those those gaps. Thankfully, we're a school district that strategically plans, period. So you also, the the two of these are two are are two documents that are actually very much parallel parallel documents that we'll, you know, we'll share and bring up. So if we could just go to maybe the third slide? So so this, so the strategic, you know, so the strategic plan, you know, has, you know, has our district's mission, vision, core values. It's a, it's a plan that is a four-year, that is a four-year plan looking forward. It outlines, you know, it outlines, yes, three specific areas of strategic, you know, where we have strategic initiatives and has has us developing action plans to accomplish those goals. Meanwhile, the Student Opportunity Act plan looks specifically within our data to look at where we have persistent disparities, you know, where we have some learners that could, you know, could use additional support and looks at how we can go and take, you know, take our resources and help close, help close those gaps. Those plans are reviewed by the commissioner on a three-year cycle and, you know, and the expectation is that your state funding in part is is attached to these plans. The reality for a district that's well-supported like ours from, you know, from our taxpayers is that, is that, you know, we'll, we will likely see very little additional money coming from the state because of the Student Opportunity Act. But, you know, but again, it's a push for all districts to go strategically planned. So, yeah, so we'll, if we kind of jump to the next slide, just a quick overview on our district's strategic plan. There are three areas of of focus within the strategic plan. The first is, last year, we brought to you the Portrait of the Graduate. You know, so the Portrait of the Graduate, and as we said last year, it's, that was like the easy thing is, is, I mean, it took a lot of time. But identifying, you know, identifying those key areas where we'd like to see our 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 students become strong and, you know, within each area of the Portrait of the Graduate as they as they grow from, you know, from pre-K all the way through senior year. That was the easy lift. Actually implementing it and and drilling down and layering the Portrait of the Graduate pre-K through, you know, through senior year within our curriculum is the heavy lift. So, so that that's the first of, you know, the first focus here of the strategic plan. We also have areas within our own curriculum that we want to strengthen. So there's a focus there on learning and academics within, you know, within the strategic plan. And the last one is is to have specific areas where we're focusing on strategic plan. And the last one is to have specific areas where we're focusing on wellness and student well-being, again, to make sure that we're, that we are being that safe, inclusive, and supportive environment for all of our students. So we have a hyperlink in the report that takes you to a website that has the complete strategic plan that we shared with the Strategic Planning Committee. It's all blurring together. Is that two nights ago? Was it last night? Two nights ago?
Two nights.
And I really would like to thank Joy for all of her efforts to go and make this the polished document that we can all be proud of. But you can, as you go within the strategic plan, you'll see how we've kind of drilled down within each of the strategic initiatives. So I'll turn this over to Joy, who can kind of talk about the document and where we'll go with the document when it comes to the website.
Hi there. Joy Jordan, Community Engagement Coordinator. So you all should have a hard copy of this in your packets. This version of the report will be used for handing out to people that would like a hard copy. It will be posted on the website. However, the bulk of the website content is going to be interactive, so you don't just have to flip through a PDF. You will be able to actually click on, for example, the Portrait of a Graduate implementation. That will drop down to the categories. It'll drop down again to the specifics, and you can really drill down depending on how much information you want. We will also be embedding information about the metrics once those are set, and the action steps in the implementation plan. There'll be a nice dashboard. There's a company that the district is working with for data, sort of management and presentation. And so people that are very interested in this stuff can drill down really deeply and find out how the data is tying back into some of the specific goals that are listed. We will also be creating a smaller version with a little bit more of an overview of the strategic plan that we'll be sharing out with the community through different mechanisms, including hopefully some mailings, having copies available at libraries and town halls and that sort of thing, and really just making sure that everybody in the community knows how to access this information. The website will go live ideally tomorrow, once everything hopefully goes well tonight. It's mostly done, except for some of the data side of it that will come rolling in as those measurements are being taken. And we will obviously do a push and share it with the media, and hopefully get some coverage about what the district is looking to do in the next four years.
And if you were to go to, let's say, the last page in this, in this report is on the initiative on being in wellness. See, F3.1, it says comprehensive wellness programs, and then you have sort of two action steps under those. The administrative team has been meeting, and we have been taking each one of those to go and say, okay, who's going to be in charge? How are we going to achieve that? What sort of resources are needed? So we're fleshing out how to get each of these, each of these action steps and implemented as we look forward over the course of the next four years. And we'll be putting those, as we finalize them as a team, up on the website. And then ultimately, we'll be taking that back to you as the school committee to go and report out, here's where we are, here's how we're moving forward, and just have, as we've done before, just periodic reports on our progress towards each one of these action steps and ultimately the initiatives.
Good evening, everyone. Robin Millen, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment for the district. So this, obviously, as the superintendent said, dovetails nicely with the SOA plan. So both plans require a lot of input from the stakeholders of the community, and we were lucky because we had all the POG information, we had all the strategic planning information, we had the focus groups, we had everything that we needed to do. But the Student Opportunity Act is really a DESI-dedicated document. It has a lot of jargon. It has a lot of dropdowns that we have to pick from. So essentially, what it is, as the superintendent said, is a microcosm of your strategic plan. So we're really in a nice alignment right now to be able to do this pretty easily. So what we were able to do is focus on our high-needs population for this plan, which is what we identified as our low-income students, our English learners, and our students with disabilities. And based on the evidence-based programming that the SOA requires us to choose from, we felt the best opportunity to report to the state and also to focus on for this plan was early intervention and readiness, which includes increasing the high-needs population. Well, that's due to the increasing high-needs population of particularly our pre-K population, which we've been talking about for quite a while since the budget started, and also our literacy scores for our kindergarten population. This COVID thing, you know, still coming, and all the early literacy skills. So we, in the strategic plan and also in this plan, you'll see a focus on early literacy skills. The second objective of evidence-based programming that we did choose from the state was effective student support systems. We have been using data effectively throughout the district for many years. But in order to have data is great, but you need to have a really robust, multi-tiered system of support to then turn that data into actionable outcomes for students. So this opportunity allows us to choose that we are going to build our MTSS, which we lovingly call it, and so that it builds a more robust system of support for all of our students, including those in academic needs, but also acceleration as well as intervention, and includes academic, social, emotional, and behavioral. Did I get the right button? So I'm not going to read this, but the SOA plan requires us to show the state where it dovetails with our strategic plan. So this is just an example of one of the places where it dovetails. So again, on the left-hand side is your strategic plan. So one of our goals is in those curricular excellence topic or theme. And then if you look at the second bullet down, it says promote early literacy development through partnership with families and caregivers, early childhood providers, and community organizations. That is what I just described as one of our goals of our SOA. So we will be working and doing a needs assessment to see what are the needs of our early, our early learners, our pre-kindergarten learners? What do we need to provide access and support, either with our private providers or increasing our supports here within our schools? And then potentially, looking to see, are we missing students that just are not being serviced? Like, a few years ago, we did the PEG grant through all the different, there were many different districts and through the collaborative, and we were able to identify a segment of the population that we weren't servicing, hence why we have the YMCA now at Harwich Elementary and some of that programming. So we just want to go back and take a look to see what's going on and where we are at this point, meeting the needs of our early learners. And then developing the local partnerships with our childhood programming, early childhood programming, and then providing opportunities for early childhood partners to help, to participate in our professional development that we offer, giving that option to our providers, our private providers, or other people that are helping us raise our kids in that early learning stage that are eventually coming into our district, opening our doors up so that they partner with us in that professional development. And again, on the strategic side, that's like the science of reading and some of the professional development that we'll be doing with our teachers as the next couple of years go on. And this one is the other just example, but here is the effective student support systems, which is that MTSS. And if you crosswalk it, actually, that's a big part of the strategic plan. It's also a big part of the SOA plan. So there's multiple interconnections with that one. And then, again, this is a DESI-based document, so they require us to give examples of where these investments, even though we don't have a large pool of money coming because of the way we operate. But they want us to tell them, okay, this is where this plan is going to be monetized, and this is the money that you have projected to be doing that. Even though little bits come in, they still want to know where this money comes, and is it coming from Chapter 70? Is it coming from Title? Before, was it coming from ESER? That's over, but we have to identify all of that. So here is just a few examples from our FY25 budget. Obviously, pre-K programming. There's the amount that we have slated for classroom teachers, other teaching supplies, materials, and then we have to connect that to the effective practices that the SOA has. So we have to crosswalk that as well over. So high-quality instructional materials, there it is, and there's the EVP, they call them, for the SOA. So those are just some examples, and I have another slide with the professional development, the multilingual learners. Again, remember, the SOA is targeting multilingual, or English learners, but multilingual, we call them here. And then also the students with disabilities, so that's itemized in this plan.
And then lastly, I would just like to spend a brief moment really thanking the people that were part of our strategic planning development team. They put in a lot of hours. Included in that were Sheri Armstrong, Joe Asilio, Kristy Cottone, Abby Dudley, School Committee member Scotty Finnegan, Tina Games, and Meredith Henderson, Cindy Gushi, who's here with us, Charles Kruska, Shelley LaSella, Joy Jordan, Mike McMillan, Robin, Ryan Millen, Lisa Potts, Joan Sheehan, and Martha Stevens. And I would just like to...
And Megan.
Oh, and Megan, sorry.
She's right there!
And Megan Smith.
Yay, Megan!
And I would really like to specifically thank Robin and Joy. As many of you know, the superintendent literally went down in the middle of the strategic planning process. And while I was the, often the head on a screen on some computer on one of the tables, nothing really replaces being there, boots on the ground. And Robin and Joy really put in a lot of time and effort to go and keep the process rolling when I couldn't be there in person. I greatly appreciate the time they put in on it.
Thank you.
So, anything else? So just, the very last thing is, ultimately, we don't need to have either of these happen tonight, but ultimately, we need a vote to have the school committee accept the strategic plan. So as Joy said, we can go live and start rolling it forward and out there. We also have timeliness in that we do have one other school committee meeting between now and when the Student Opportunity Act plans need to be submitted. But one of the things that shows up on the DESI dropdown menu is, when did your school committee vote to accept your Student Opportunity Act plan? So either we need to have the committee vote to accept the plan at this meeting or at next meeting, because we have to submit our plans by April 1st.
Any questions, comments? Are we feeling okay about voting tonight? Do I have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to accept the 2024-2020 Strategic Plan.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Fabulous.
I would like to make a motion to accept the Student Opportunity Act Plan.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? All right, great.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along. I just brought our school committee goals back to us tonight. It's been about six months since we developed them, and I thought it just would be a good opportunity to just take a peek at where we are. I feel like we're kind of in a great place as far as our goals, but just to take a peek at that. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I wanted to give an update on goal number one, action step number one. So through my position with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, Division VII, we are planning, probably this spring, I don't have a date, but we're looking to pull together partners across the region to have a discussion about housing, how it's affecting our families, our workforce, and our hiring. And so when that happens, I will let all of you know. Would hope that you could participate. I will definitely participate, and will report back to you all. So I just wanted to let you know that that action step can be supported through what we're doing with MASK.
Excellent. I think with goal number two, we continue the work through the Montamois Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Advisory Council. Goal number three, we have had a few joint meetings with town leaders already, and then we have had successful negotiations thus far. That is still ongoing. With the goal number four, we have already had one presentation from our Director of Curriculum and the Curriculum Directors, and look forward to one at the end of the year. And our last goal, we just voted on our strategic plan. So I think we're in a pretty good place. Ms. Eretlon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a question on goal four for the Curriculum Directors. We did have the presentation in January. We have another one coming in June. For the presentation in June, can we somehow incorporate some feedback from the staff to see how it's been integrated into the classroom, and if it's been effective for them in that capacity? What are we helping them expedite better? And then also, maybe some specifics on, you know, making headway as far as merging curriculums and things like that. I personally would really like that feedback, because I know one of the larger conversations we have had last year and this year is, are those two positions and its effectiveness direct to the staff? You know, maybe a couple teachers, you feel comfortable having them speak and say, this is what I experienced, this is what's been good about it, something like that.
Yeah, possible. Great. Any other questions, comments? All right, I think we're doing a great job. Okay, moving right along to the creation of a new MRHS Student Activity Account, Red Right Return. Oh, I take that back. We're going to move back to the first reading of our calendar for 2024-2025.
Good evening again. Robin Millen, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. So we're bringing forth the first reading of the 2024-2025 school year calendar. It is beginning a student calendar year the Tuesday after the Labor Day weekend, as always. The calendar reads very familiar to what you always have had. It's the 180 student-facing days. There is one change in the springtime. We had had a long weekend in the spring that we have removed. And then the vacation days in February and April are marked and are there. And then we have graduation set as June 7, 2025. And then if we don't have any fall weather days, our last day of school is June 17, 2025. Thank you.
Any questions, comments? All right, we'll bring this back for a second reading at our next meeting. Now, the creation of the new MRHS Student Activity Account, Red Right Return.
Good evening again. This is, so as you know, we have a number of student activity accounts, which are for funds, really, which are raised and spent, you know, for students. And we're really just the holders of those funds for them. And we have a number of activity accounts, and this is another one that we've had requested to be opened. And this is, so we have had funds, we've talked about in the past, that interns running business programs at the high school have raised funds, and then they've come to you to request to donate it or spend it in some other way. And this would just formalize that process so that they have their own account every year, and it's not, we're not using, I think we used a lighthouse account last time, and this would make sure the funds are properly set apart and set aside.
Any questions? Or a motion? Jackie, the Mrs. Eretlon?
Jackie, can I see it on?
Yeah, no problem. Um, I'd like to make a motion for the creation of the Monomoy Regional High School Student Activity Account, Red Right Return.
Second.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Fabulous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, moving right along to the Subcommittee Representative and Liaison Reports. We have a, a negotiation Subcommittee Report out.
So the negotiations continue to move on at a really fair rate. Conversations have been healthy, and I think that we're in a good spite, good place. Any questions?
Um, Finance Subcommittee?
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, the Finance Subcommittee met last Friday evening, um, and we had a consensus vote that, uh, we were happy with the progress of the budget this year, happy with the process of the budget this year, um, and with the outcome as well. Uh, we did re-review, um, a couple items which were brought up in our previous meeting to just kind of, to rediscuss and, and understand what was happening and the moving parts, um, that were in question, and we are all, um, very happy going forward with the budget as it was presented tonight.
Excellent. Any questions? Comments? Moving right along to the Superintendent's Report.
I have a few recognitions tonight. Uh, first, as part of an innovative school-community partnership, fifth graders at Monomoy Middle School have been crafting poetry that will be on display throughout our community in the next few weeks. You can look for them at the following locations: Where the Sidewalk Ends Bookstore, Yellow Umbrella Books, Reed Books, Below the Brine Bookshop, Cape Cod Chronicle, Cape Roots Market and Cafe, Brooksfree Library, Eldridge Public Library, Chatham Perk, Sativa, and Solis, uh, Chatham Candy Manor, Dunkin' Donuts Chatham, Chatham Post Office, North Chatham Outfitters, Larry's PX, Ace Hardware of Harwich Port, George's Pizza in Harwich, Starbucks at Stop, at Stop and Shop, uh, the Frying Pan Gallery, Chatham Community Center, Cape Cod Five, the Harwich Community Center, and Cape Cod Cooperative Bank, the Lanyard Barn Grill, and also at Agway. Also, as mentioned in the MRA, uh, or the high school's, uh, Student Representative Report last week, more than 40 Monomoy students and educators traveled to Italy over the break for a very successful visit throughout the country. From Murano to Venice to Florence to Rome, they explored Italy's historic sites, art, and architecture, culture, and food. Uh, many thanks to the chaperones who made the experience possible for our students, which included Mr. and Mrs. Smeltzer, Dr. Otto, Mrs. Newcomb, Mrs. Casey, Ms. Lee, and Ms. Jones. And lastly, last week, the high school, uh, high school junior, Bobby Rose Brown, was asked to give the opening invocation for the International Women's Day Breakfast hosted by the League of Women Voters. Bobby spoke to a handful, or to a houseful of hundreds of attendees, and gave an inspirational and powerful remarks. In addition to being an engaged student here at Monomoy, she's also an activist and an author of the book, E is for Equity, An Alphabetically Arranged Toolkit for Changemakers. We can't wait to see what Bobby does next.
Amazing. Questions, comments? All right, we have had the presentations, presentation of the warrants, so I'm just looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we will adjourn at 7:15 PM.